Well, I'll call this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board Monday, August 28th, 2023 to order. We're doing this hybrid Zoom and in the room. We need to call, be sure that we have people online.
Certainly. Mr. Robbins?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
I am present. Mr. Veika Traman?
Present.
Mr. Hassner?
I'm here, yes.
And staff, we got in the room, Ms. Coughlin?
Present.
And listen, we do not have Natalia this week.
All right. I guess that we can just.
We have a hand raised from an attendee under the name of Grafton Land Use Departments.
I'm trying to promote them to a panelist because I have a sneaky suspicion that is Natalia, but it is saying an error code. I cannot promote. Dave, maybe you can try.
Well, I will try. There we go. Nope, failed to change role. Probably because Grafton Land Use Departments is maybe already logged in a couple of times.
Tell me when things are under control here.
I've just enabled presumably Natalia to talk if she wants to.
It's just me. I just want to let you know I'm on, but I may not stay on the entire meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're under control. Time for public input. This is when we let people who have something to say to us in our within our area of responsibility that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody, anything? Seen action items. Approval of Shorty and Bond for Abbey Woods.
That has been, that is still under review and we will not be able to discuss it. It was added to the agenda before when it was posted.
Okay, well, we'll postpone it for when we do have what we need. Draft decision scenic road permit 62 Weston Street, lot one.
I did not catch anything to be edited in the decision, in the draft decision.
Anybody with any concerns with the decision as drafted?
Nope. Like, like Justin, I read through the decision and didn't see any issues. So it's consistent with what we discussed at the previous meeting. With that, I will move that the board approve the draft decision in all of its particulars and grant the permit.
Second.
I guess that's with favorable.
With all findings favorable towards granting the permit.
And second, is there discussion? Any discussion from anyone? Apparently not. Role call.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Zoning bylaw amendments approved drafts, submit articles to town warrant and schedule public hearing.
Yes, so I'm going to, this was a follow-up to our discussion at our last planning board meeting as we tee up our warrant articles for town, town meeting submission. We currently have seven, which includes in the, in the order as listed on the agenda, modification to the zoning map to include our MBTA Communities Overlay District as well as the text that will accompany the zoning map change. Today, we did receive an economic feasibility analysis, which is a required component for our submission for MBTA communities compliance as we are using a portion of the Village Mixed Use South Grafton District that has affordability thresholds that is too high based on what the state would like to see. The state would, is under no circumstances approving affordability thresholds over 20%. So that was uploaded as well for the board's review and we can talk about that. But the other, I can probably just start Bob and go down the list, whatever you prefer. Or whatever the board would like to see.
Go for it.
Okay. So this is the zoning map text that I drafted and this will be the map to accompany that. It's quite large, but you can see our five sub-districts, MCMO1 and MCMOD1, MCMOD4 with the appropriate changing of the boundaries incorporated by CMRPC. Then we have not any, not in the correct word, MCMOD5 for the Village Mixed Use Gateway. And then we have MCMOD3 down here, Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District and then our portion of the Village Mixed Use South Grafton District that we are calling MCMOD2. The other changes are in the legend here. MBTA Communities Overlay District indicated by the neon green horizontal lines and that we modified the title, of course, to I'm sorry, no, we didn't. I'm sorry, I take that back. We did not change the title. So let me know if any, if you have any questions or concerns about the map or any changes.
My only comment is I think this is good to, you know, report town meeting as, you know, as drafted as the map is in there. I do have a slight concern over how we'll be able to articulate this to town, hit the town body that doesn't look at zoning maps often. You know, especially with this, you know, this fully, you know, filled out map, but that, that can be adjusted and, you know, tried to be resolved before, you know, anytime up to town meeting when we can have a presentation for it.
Are we looking? Is our map getting rather complicated compared to others?
My, in my experience working in other communities, no.
Oh, okay. I feel better. Cause, I don't know.
Yeah, we've had to use the bright symbology to define the, the area.
You know, you got overlays, overlaying overlays, overlay, and never mind.
Now we have, it's, it is a somewhat complex zoning map, but I, I've not looked at other communities, so I don't, I couldn't even begin to compare it. To Justin's point, I know my, my own visualizations of this are, they make, make the new district stand out much more prominently, but that's a, you know, that's a presentation issue, not a. As long as this map satisfies the requirements for adding a zone to the zoning map, it works.
Will the zoning map actually look like that with the green, I guess it's green?
That is what we're proposing.
Okay.
Stand out. But we can obviously change the symbology. That's, that's not a, that's not a heavy lift.
Okay. But what? The symbology that town meeting sees is what should be published, whatever it is when we do. Okay, we're gonna vote on these individually? Yeah, I guess. In each case, the motion would be to submit it for, submit it to the warrant.
Submit to the select board for inclusion in the town warrant.
Did someone?
I move, I move right to send.
And?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
Aye. Motion carries. The second one now, okay. Transit Village Overlay District.
Sorry, it's a lot of clicking to go back.
Yeah, well, we just, we just approved the map for the MBTA overlay with, there's also zoning bylaw language that goes along with that.
Correct.
Which is
rather.
It's being, at least it's being, being shown here as a separate warrant article.
Yes, yes, we're doing the map, the map separately as, as done in, in the past. This is, as Dave said, the language to accompany the MBTA Communities Overlay District changes. This is the most current version that we have that incorporates feedback from our last, from all our planning board meetings to date, as well as our subcommittee meeting and conversations with finalizing, finalizing the draft and via our public forum. So this is the final added text highlighted in green, which will ultimately become, well, potentially become section 14 of the zoning bylaw, which would be titled MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. So this has been, this was discussed at the last meeting, but this is the finalized format.
Okay, so any comment or discussion?
My comment is the, I know within the past week, I believe it was, maybe two weeks, the Mass Legislature published some additional, you know, refinement on the guidelines for this. It does, are, as drafted right now, does this conform with those changes as far as we understand them to be?
Yes, it does. And that's a, that's a great question and good comment. Yeah, that did actually not affect Grafton.
Okay.
Luckily. So this, the zoning is accurate and up to date.
My browser has started acting oddly with the recent update. And I'm not sure. Oh, I see. It opened it in Word.
Yes.
And I'm, should I be seeing the coloring?
Yes, yes, I don't, I didn't.
And I don't know. Okay, it's okay.
Yeah, I just denoted the, because we're adding, we're going to be adding that text which, which currently doesn't exist. So I, yes, I could have probably picked a less brighter shade of green.
No, that, that's not the problem. This just isn't doing it.
Right, you're, you're not, you're not seeing it in the colors.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the color, but I'm also, this is all changed. I, it used to come up and I could change size much more easily. It just started doing some strange stuff.
The technical problem, I think, is just the simple fact that this is published as the Word file, which depending on which version of Word or which software you use to open it, things can be a little different. You know, PDF would be a little more consistent. You know, I don't think this is a problem for us tonight, especially with you sharing it, but that's just the.
Yeah, no, I, I often encourage the use of PDFs for this sort of thing where you don't, people aren't necessarily wanting to make changes or you, maybe you don't want them. Like, I don't distribute agendas as editable files or PDFs, which are easy to open everywhere, about as much as you can find.
Right.
And are pretty consistent. All right.
Natalia has raised her hand here.
I just wanted to let you know, the reason I used the Word as it was is because last time I changed it to PDF, you had said that it had deleted some of the side comments. So that was the trade-off. Does that make sense?
Well.
So, so if there's any comments redlined on the side, it won't, the, the PDF wasn't including it.
Yeah.
So that's why we're using Word, so.
We don't, we don't want to drill down in technology anymore than we absolutely have to. So, any discussion, comments, anything?
My, my only thought was just that, um, I've heard a lot of people talk about like what's going on in Holden, Mass right now with their MBTA zoning. So I think it'd be good to, as this gets shared, is to kind of unpack what's going on with, with Holden a little bit as well, just in, in terms of how, how that would apply to, to the situation.
Well, if, if we weren't doing this, we might be doing what they're doing, which is getting important people at the state level taking actions against them.
I can respond to that as well. Yep. So Holden has not met their requirements to date. I'm not sure if that, at, at, the last time I checked, which was last week, they still have not met their requirements, which will have implications for them going forward in terms of being able to apply for certain grant funds. So there's three pool, larger pools of grant funds that are available for communities. They, and if you do not meet the requirements of section three and or the zoning act, you will not be able to pursue those, amongst other things, not having, you know, it's always a better idea to not have the state, not, not be going against the state, but this is a requirement and there's been very few communities that have, I think there was initial pushback when the legislation was first released, but now you're seeing communities start to comply. And I, but Holden is, is.
I thought I saw an actual, you know, filing of some legal proceeding against them. It was, it was just in the TNG, so.
That's.
Okay, that's.
Anyway.
From, from the people from there that I run into at CMRPC, I'd say that they're not ready to comply at this point.
Yes, yes.
They have strong, but okay. That's, we're, we're, we're being compliant.
So I move that we submit this to the select board for inclusion in the fall warrant.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
Uh, motion carries unanimously. Let's see, now we're on to number three.
The North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District.
Overlay District. And now I, I have two lines listed here. First one says redlined and then the second one says pretty much the same thing, except without redline.
Yes, I included both just so it was clear for the board, but I can, whatever version you prefer to show, I'm happy to, happy to do. I think the red line might, might be easier. It does incorporate and all changes discussed to, to date, so there's not going to be any surprises, but.
The red line document shows what town meeting is going to be asked to change.
Yes, yes. And then, yeah, and both are unfortunately in Word format, Bob, so. I'll, I'll start with the red line and if it becomes too hard to read, then we can change.
Yeah, I'm getting the red.
Yes, so again, this incorporates.
And just as a reminder for myself anyway, the red line includes the changes from the state, from the last change of this that has not been established at town meeting and accepted.
Yes, this includes that conversation, conversations with the board prior to this meeting and all of the feedback gleaned there. Feedback that we heard from the select board and conversations with our, with our subcommittee. So this is everything getting us to this version. So a lot of the changes you can see, it's, it's changing where, you know, some of the, some of the, some of it is formatting, some of it is changing, you know, DHCD to EOHLC, changing enabling to governing, which I believe that was the state that wanted us to do that. I'm happy to talk through anymore, but again, this is this is, you know, what we've been seeing for the past few months, just wrapped up in a, in a nice bow.
Any questions or comments?
I move that we submit this as drafted to the select board for inclusion in the fall warrant.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there discussion?
Just a quick note, as, as you might recall from the last meeting, where the board appointed a subcommittee to work on this.
Yes.
The applicant. And the subcommittee, this is the result. The subcommittee basically found almost nothing to recommend changing in the zoning bylaw. The accompanying design standards, we did a little bit more work on that, but we reached an agreement on what those would be.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Just a comment on the presentation here, the, the red makes it particularly difficult to believe, but offline, if we want to produce a version of this, is it more easy to be? I've done a fair amount of work with, on the bylaw committee in coming up with recommendations for readable formats.
Yes, yes, I will incorporate those changes, Dave, when I submit the.
Yeah, the one thing I didn't include in that note was the, the precise color settings that we recommend.
Yes, I had a hard time carrying them over from the original doc and this was.
Yeah, we could, we could talk offline about how to deal with that.
Yep.
Okay. Intensity of use. Schedule. Changes to it.
So the board might recall, we were having a conversation about this. This was a suggestion.
I forgot, I forgot to turn recording on.
Recording in progress.
Well, it's the best we can do.
We missed recording the first part of the meeting. My apologies. I had started it and then paused it until we, to give us time to get things set.
I see.
Yeah, but Bill is also recording.
Bill usually records as well in the back.
If Bill is recording, then the Zoom recording is, will, will be incomplete.
Okay.
He's giving us a thumbs up. He's got it.
I'm glad you can see. I've never been able to see. I've got a light that reflects, but, I don't know. Okay.
So.
Go.
So, yes, so as the board might recall, this was a discussion that was, well, this was brought to my attention by the building department due to the number of smaller sized lots and folks seeking to get variances for sheds. And due to the sheer influx of applications, we came up with a suggestion to include footnotes here for the side and rear setbacks. But after, and then we also included a second section down here, which would have been 3.2, 0.3, 0.5 outlining a process that included a variance. And ultimately, what we did was we streamlined it to include this one footnote reduced to five feet for side and rear setbacks for accessory structures to one and two family principal uses that do not occupy more than 200 square feet. And what this will essentially do is allow folks who are have, you know, have accessory uses that are within five feet of the side or rear setbacks, where they can just go to the building department for a zoning permit rather than having to get a variance through the ZBA. And this is on the ZBA's agenda for tomorrow night and they've been made aware of this. And we did talk to council about this, who did not see glaring issues with it as written.
If I remember our conversation last time about this, you know, was that, you know, the wording that was in their, you know, last meeting was more that it'd be a ZBA approval. And it, I think the board felt that doing this change would be something the ZBA should recommend themselves, you know, but whether it's for their approval or, you know, in general, and then, you know, we could public hearing it on our end if they wanted to submit it.
Right, right. And I did ask council and she did say that either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals could, has, has the ability to propose this for the town meeting warrant. Typically zoning changes are the planning board and, and what we would be doing is basically removing the ZBA from their approval authority position because we are no longer requiring somebody to get a variance. So it's taking it, it's, it's basically.
If you were under five feet, you'd be to them for variance.
Yep.
What's the number, what, how big a change is this? I don't remember the numbers. 20 feet, 10 feet?
Yeah, well, in some instances it depends on which zone, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, for example, for agriculture, it would be 10, 10 feet of relief for side and rear versus, you know, OELIAS is. But usually those are larger sized lots. This is, this is for like the smaller, like 10,000 square foot lots with.
The, the, the question is, how much are we relaxing the standard? People are, the zoning bylaw is designed to protect people in certain ways. I think I'd rather let the ZBA submit this.
Yeah. I'm I'm not strongly in favor of doing this without at least hearing, you know, from the ZBA saying that they would want, you know, our input before it submits or, you know, whatever. I, either way, I think that's something that, you know, without this board having a understanding of how often this is a problem, how often it, you know, we, it, not even so much a problem, but how often does situations where a reduced setback is appropriate, is something that would be useful to know to make this change, I think.
Yeah, convenience isn't, convenience doesn't trump protection.
Right.
And I think the ZBA should make the case for this. Anybody else want to go the other way?
Six to one, half a dozen in the other to me. I mean, if the ZB, if the ZBA wants to promote this, it would be, it would be, it probably would be a point in its favor if the ZBA were to be seen as the instigator of this.
Yeah. I think we should refer it to them. I mean, the work's done. They can just say, go for it if they like it.
Yeah, I mean, if the ZBA is comfortable with this, yeah, let's, let the ZBA put their name behind it.
Does someone want to, either, we'll either decide to pass over or someone will vote to refer it to the ZBA.
I'll move that we refer this to the ZBA with. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, second. It, it will come back to us in the public hearing process.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but. Regardless of who initiates it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that it's really something that we shouldn't be initiating. Is there any discussion on this? Discussion, uh, roll call.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
Aye. Move, it, it carries unanimously. Okay, let's try. District intensity, oh, definitions, we may, we can do that.
Yeah, you're looking at the 5 dot 10 dot 2?
Yep.
So this was the finalized format for this, which, this was the recommendations from the Attorney General's Office following the October 2022 town meeting to align with CCC regs. So basically just doing the follow-up necessary to make sure that we have all the accurate and correct definitions.
I'll move the board to submit this to the warrant.
Second.
Moved in second and discussion. Hearing none. Motion.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Did we have?
I vote aye.
Yes, I moved, I made the motion.
I missed it. I don't, did you? And you seconded it, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
So. Dave, Davidson both voted aye. I vote aye. Mr. Veika Traman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner?
And I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Maybe we can.
We can do the definition in 2.1, that's really. We can do the definition in two point one, that's a really. Simple thing.
Oh, uh, is that the last?
That's the definition of tractor trailer.
But is this the last, I lost count here because the agenda doesn't.
Appendix A, um.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we missed that, yeah, appendix A, we.
Okay, let's, let's look at, um, that, that, the next to last one, appendix, uh. Let me see, appendix A. Uh, this. Oh, this, is it?
This is where we're adding seasonal outdoor.
Oh.
Yep.
I. Did we decide to say no in, uh. R forty and R twenty?
Yeah.
We'd.
Where is the farm?
R forty is right here.
I think the farm is in R forty.
This is for the seasonal outdoor like reunion has and.
Oh, this isn't, this isn't the one for selling food prepared for, okay. Yeah, well, yeah, no, I, I remember that. Crossing over the two. Um, any discussion on this?
This looks to align with exactly what we asked for the change to make.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll move that we recommend this for the town, for the warrant.
Second.
Uh, we'll submit it for the warrant.
Submit for the warrant. Thank you.
And second, submit it, right?
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
I vote I, motion carries, um, unanimously. Now, I'm gonna, even though it's two minutes past our time. I think we can get the last one here.
Think we can get that done.
The definitions, what's a tractor trailer? I guess, I'm not a truck, truck driver type thing, so I don't know whether that's, but it's better than not having a definition, I suppose.
I move that we submit it for the warrant.
I'll second that, as I think noted the last time when we talked about this, there is one reference in the, uh, use table to tractor trailer. It needed a definition.
Okay, um. Did we get a motion?
Yes.
Second, roll call.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
Hi, motion carries unanimously, it being just after seven thirty, we'll go to the hearings. Uh, Eight Millennium Drive. What?
Mister Chair, um, the board will also need to, um, vote to schedule a public hearing. Please.
I. I don't know whether we have to vote. Uh, cause technically, it goes to the selectmen and then the selecting them, select men. Send it back to us for hearing. If you actually read the, uh, law, we don't do that, but that's what the law says, you know, we, we get ahead of the curve, um.
I don't remember us voting for the public hearing last time.
We haven't, but we can.
Yeah.
Um, you know, e- either the chair or the staff often manage that, um.
Yep.
But, um, you want to do it?
Wha- what date we looking at?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth of September?
Yes, and then if we needed to, you know, if the board needed to vote to close the hearing on that date and and review the report that does give them October second. Even though you can do both in one meeting, but twenty fifth would be a.
Salute.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Eight Millennium Drive.
Mister Chairman, I suspect that Mister Hill's scenic driveway would be a lot quicker than our site plan review, so. We don't object to shuffling the agenda around.
Thank you so much.
Perfectly happy, no, I anticipated we'd have to take a little longer for. Eight Millennium Drive than we will for.
Thank you.
Like, like music clock museum. So, uh, special, uh, SRP, um. Twenty three, uh, twenty twenty three dash oh three, um, scenic road permit.
And this one is a new one.
Is what?
This is a new one.
This is a new one, so I need to read the. The notice.
I don't know what you're.
This one is new.
This is not the continuation from last time, this is a separate.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. Pursuant to Articles twenty four of the Grafton bylaws of the, general bylaws of Tana Grafton and scenic road regulations, the planning board will hold a public hearing. On Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three at seven thirty PM in conference room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road. Grafton, Mass. to consider an application for a scenic road permit for alterations to the stone wall entry clearing for a driveway opening. Located at sixty one Western Street Lot One and shown as Grafton Assessors Map twenty two Lot Five B. Said property is located in a low density residential R forty zoning district, the applicant owner is Willard House Clock Museum. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the gr- planning department during regular business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at www dot grafton ma dot gov, on the planning develop, department development projects webpage.
Good evening, Norman Hill, civil engineering with land planning, so last Friday, we met at this site. With Kevin Gallagher, the tree warden, and with Fiona Coughlin, the town planner, and I can safely tell you, there are no trees on the town's property to be removed. Kevin did mention that he's had quite a few accidents on this curve in the past. Um, so he recommended we put up a caution sign, so we revised the plan today to show a caution sign to be put. About a hundred fifty feet uphill from that driveway, the caution sign will say caution driveway, reduce speed.
Do we have a, 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 any, anything in writing from the, uh, tree warden?
I summarized our meeting in, in the memo.
Okay, I guess that, oh, yeah, it should be on record.
Yes.
Um, okay. Does anybody have any question or input on this?
I don't really have. Yeah, this again is like, like one of the ones we were looking at. Couple of weeks back where the stone wall is pretty continuous and you, in order to put a driveway and you kind of have to cut through it.
Yep.
And there are no, no trees of concern that the, you know, the tree warden is taking a look at that and.
Yeah.
That's not an issue, so this again, and it ends up being, uh, pretty straightforward.
Okay, uh, anything from anyone? Anyone out there, this is a hearing. I don't see anyone, do you?
No.
Nope, we have no hands on Zoom, the only Zoom attendee is connected with the Eight Millennium Project.
Yeah, so, um.
I move that we close the public hearing and direct staff to draft this, a decision for our next meeting.
Second. Moved in second, it is their discussion, hearing on.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
Hi, motion carries unanimously, um, which brings us to. Sixty two Essence Street, right?
Yes.
And this is a continuation.
This is the continuation.
Of, uh, uh, SRP twenty twenty three dash oh one scenic road permit. Tell us where we are.
Yes, good evening again, Norman Hill from Land Planning, so we met out there last Friday with Fiona Coughlin, town planner and with Kevin Gallagher, the tree warden. And there is one big oak, it's almost four feet in diameter, Kevin looked, gave it a good look and he noticed a black. Discoloration where the tree was doing one of these things and he, he felt that that tree was about to split. And and would, would, one, one would come right across the road and the power lines and, so he didn't have a, any problems with us knocking down the tree, he did in fact ask us to plant. Two to replace it, so we revised the plan, um, to show two oak trees to be planted in the lot. Not out by the street, but about two hundred feet in on the, on the common driveway, um, and, and, um. I think that, uh, hopefully takes care of it.
Wonder how well protected those trees are in terms of, uh, you know. Property owners sometimes decide they don't want trees and they just take down even ones that are in the town property. Get, uh, we got a back, back on theirs.
Well, the two trees we proposed are in past the first house, past the first septic, but sort of like right. Equal distance between the two houses, they're gonna be back there, so the tree, the tree fell, it wouldn't hurt either house.
But I'm, I'm thinking of the owners deciding they don't want trees and taking them down. If we were putting trees on the, in the right of way, um, they'd be town trees.
There are many trees in the right of way now, you know, four, five, six inch trees, so I think we'd have a hard time. If we were to plant a sapling to get it to, to survive with all that shade on it, you know?
Well.
I, I think hearing what the tree warden said about the one that is coming down and knowing how. Vegeta- vegetatively crowded that right of way is, I don't know that I see a better spot, it's in my own head. And yet, that, that is a concern that the owners of the property could, in theory, cut them down, but.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, I, I, I don't know that we'd be able to have any lasting condition or provision that would.
With the Conservation Commission, we provided a plan that shows this areas to be woods, this areas to be lawn and this areas to be. Revegetated woods in brush, this is in the area that's be revegetated woods in brush and that, that's a document that goes on record. So they'll never be allowed to take these trees down, that, that area always has to be remain woods for the stormwater management.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that, that works.
Yep. That sounds.
Does anybody else have any other input? Apparently not, um.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Moved in second to close the hearing, discussion, roll call.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
Motion, uh, I, motion carries unanimously, um, now.
Now, we have a draft decision before us.
How do people feel about the draft decisions, does anybody have any problem with what's drafted?
I would just like the board to take a look at the conditions as I wrote them to just confirm that they are written to your liking, please. Thank you, when I get there eventually, sorry, um. So a lot of this is, you know, the, the basic language that we require for permits of this nature. Um, I also like the applicant to take a look and make sure there's nothing else that's sticking out. I did add a condition three following the meeting with the tree warden that the removal of the trees in the, the tree within the right of way is going to need to. Um, comply with DPW tree removal regulations, et cetera, et cetera, because I know there's a specific set of regs that need to be followed for that process. So that, that. I do discuss the common driveway special permit and how these, both these permits are linked. So that was just basically, I just want the board to be aware that, um, the find, the conditions are incorporated. And I don't think there's anything else that I wanted to flag, but.
Think that all, all looked good to me when I read, read it over earlier.
Yep, I did not notice any issues even in my reread just now. So I move that we approve the decision and direct all findings in the positive manner.
Uh, in favorable.
Favorable manner, yes.
Sometimes no is the favorable.
That's the word I meant, favorable, not positive.
That's why we took the say in that, when we started doing that, uh, was there a second?
Second.
There was a second, uh, is there any discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
Uh, I vote I.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, have a good evening.
Motion carries unanimously, um. We, we, the, in case there's somebody watching out there, uh, who's interested in, um. One twenty four Westboro Road, maybe we should, could just.
Yeah.
Take that up, um, just one second here, um.
Move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to September twenty fifth.
Second.
Moved in second and, um, this is, uh, yeah, they, they wrote and asked to. Continue it, um. Any discussion, roll call.
Mister Da- Mister Robbins.
Hi.
Mister Davidson.
Hi.
I vote I, Mister Vekatraman.
Hi.
And Mister Hassenger.
I vote I, motion carries unanimously, now, we're gonna hear about, uh, Eight Millennium Drive. You know how many times Eight Millennium Drive has come before us?
Several.
I, I think there were what, four or five extensions, uh, and I, I think there was, there was one of them had changes. Um, and, um, I think they've all pretty well expired.
Well, the good news is, is as soon as this is approved, we'll be breaking ground, so.
Uh, we've heard that from everybody out there.
I'm sure you have. All right, I do have a notice to read before we get going.
Yeah, we have to open the hearing.
All right, pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven, one dot three dot three and four dot three of the town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, commencing at seven thirty PM in conference room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center. Thirty Providence Road, to consider an application for a special permit and site plan approval request for a major business. Office and industrial complex proposing to construct a thirty thousand square foot building with associated site improvements. Located at Eight Millennium Drive, shown as Grafton Assessors Map five Lot One J. Said property is located in an office light industrial OLI zoning district, the applicant is Eight Millennium LLC. And the owner is Valiant Enterprises LLC, a copy of the application plan are available for public inspection. At the planning department during regular business hours or on the town of Grafton website at www dot grafton ma dot gov. On the planning department development products webpage.
Great, well, thank you, good evening, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, it's nice to see everyone. It's, I know it's been a few years since I've been before the board, um, but we're excited to be here to present this project at Eight Millennium Drive to you. So as we just read, um, we've submitted site plans and special permit application for the construction of a thirty thousand square foot building at Eight Millennium Drive. Um. With some associated site improvements being forty seven parking spots that are spread between the front and side of the building. Two loading dock doors at the rear of the building as well as a drive in ramp, um. Part of our plans include the layout materials plan, which is the colored version you have before you this evening, shows the layout of the building, parking sidewalks, egress, all of that. Our typical grading and drainage plan that shows the existing and proposed contour elevations of the site along with stormwater management improvements. Utility plan that includes, uh, water and sewer, electric and gas connections to the building. A landscaping plan prepared by our in-house landscape architect, sorry Fiona, I'm talking faster than you're clicking over there. We'll give the overview and then we, we can get into the weeds if necessary, um, landscaping plan and construction details. As the chairman just mentioned, the site has been permitted several times, most recently back in two thousand seventeen. The board approved this project, which was construction of a thirty four thousand square foot building. Uh, parking for marijuana cultivation facility, the applicants, uh, sold their business in its entirety. Uh, including the dispensaries and the new owner had no interest in constructing the cultivation facility, which is why the property was listed. So our client, who's Eight Millennium Drive LLC, has the property under agreement. Has the financing in place with Saint Mary's Credit Union, local credit union, and, um. The closing is scheduled pending approval from both this board. the closing is scheduled pending approval from both this board and from the Conservation Commission, which we filed with concurrently back in the beginning of August. Our firm is both the engineer on the project as well as the site work contractor and builder, so some of you may not know that that's the primary focus of our bu- our businesses. We have the the full service engineering firm, where we have engineers and landscape architects that design and permit projects throughout the state, we have three separate site work, excavation site work crews, so we own everything from a mini excavator to a hundred thousand pound excavator, bulldozers, rock trucks, the whole nine yards. And then we have project managers, superintendents, and carpenters on the building side of things, so we would be both the engineer of record, site contractor, and builder. Uh, and so we're anxious to hopefully break ground here in in the coming month and a half or so pending approvals and presumed approvals, obviously, approvals and expiration expiration of appeal periods and then closing on the loan. Uh, we would be hoping to to break ground here during the fall, so we could beat the quote-unquote winter conditions. So for this project, although it was permitted previously, we weren't able to obtain any of the CAD files from the seller, so we had uh, first step was we sent Three Oaks Environmental out to do the wetland delineation, which is shown here in the medium green. So we did an update updated delineation. Then we had Topper Land Survey do our updated existing conditions plan, that's also page two of the application plans. And then our office prepared the site plans that are before you. We've tried to keep everything as condensed as possible towards the front of the site. Obviously to minimize cuts and fills and site development costs associated with that. We are scheduled to go before Conservation um, Tuesday of next week. And we have received the D E P file number with no comments back from D E P. There is no direct resource area impact, only buffer zone work, so we're anticipating a smooth permitting process with Conservation. The plans and applications that were submitted were customarily sent out to Graves Engineering for their peer review. We did receive a letter back from Jeff Walsh on Friday. And we're pleased to report that there are no major items to address. Uh, it was only a two-page letter, which was nice to see. On the bottom of the first page, he wants us to add some noting of the existing wood guard rail that's at the existing cul-de-sac and how that would tie into our proposed guard rail. Um, the drainage report, we did go out uh, and do new soil testing in the area of the detention basin, the previously approved plan for some reason had stormwater management way out in this finger of the lot, which was a lot more clearing and a lot more pipe run to get out there. So we decided to retest. I shouldn't say retest, we decided to do our testing here, where we have a proposed acreage detention basin to make sure we had our two-foot separation to seasonal high groundwater and to determine the infiltration rate of the existing soils in order to size this basin, so we did do the three test pits. He just wants them shown on the plan set, which is a very easy item, and then in the operation and maintenance plan, he just wants us to specify the amount of precipitation of a storm event that would require an inspection. So just give better direction for the long-term O and M plan of the uh, detention basin. So three really easy edits, um, and then just to make sure we coordinate our door locations with the architectural plans that were submitted. Granted, you know, we prepared a proposed floor plan and proposed elevations, we're not architects, that's one service we don't provide, but we draw sufficient level plans to convey to the board what we're trying to accomplish and also to the suppliers and subcontractors that help us put the budget together for the banking aspect of this. Moving forward, we'd have a registered architect prepare a detailed set of site uh, building plans that would then be submitted for our building permit application, so just some coordination on that. But no, um, no hard changes, just some some housekeeping changes really uh, from the Graves letter. Fire department also uh, provided comments, but again, these are standard comments that the fire department issues for all new developments, which it states right at the top of that. Um, stuff like street numbers have to be visible, which is a standard thing, uh, visual alarm, and so if the, you know, you have the bell and the red beacon that goes on the side of the building, if the sprinklers are going off, uh, and fire hydrants, just your ti- your stip- your typical uh, requirements that you would see on a fire department letter. Health department had no comments at this time. Sewer department again had um, standard comments that you have to have five feet of cover over the sewer force main, which is typical. That it has to, the sewer force main has to be pressure tested to the sewer department standards, again, which is typical in that they wanna witness coring of the existing sewer manhole, which is actually located on the opposite side of the driveway for nine millennium. So we would have an ejector pump that would uh, flow gravity from the building to an ejector pump and then a force main across their driveway to get to that. So we're because they're higher in elevation than we are. Again, so standard stuff, and when we would apply for a water sewer and water connection permit, I'm sure those same connection, those requirements would come up. The next one Fiona, I'm not exactly sure what it is, no, it.
My memo?
No, the one, there was one attachment prior.
Oh, um, Z B A.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't see where it actually says anything.
It's a small line and maybe it's got no comment.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, way down at the bottom of that, I think.
Yes.
Okay, and then uh, planning, this was uh, an excellent document that summarized everybody's comments, so I've gone through um, fire, D P W, and then on page, let's see, three of that document, we get into the zoning analysis, where we've got a bunch that are satisfied, although there's one that that caught me off guard, the top of page four, where you referenced the two hundred and thirty-three unit multifamily project at five?
Yes.
And they have a portion of eight millennium under agreement?
Yes.
That's what, that's what we've been told.
Yes, so.
They're shaving off a piece adjacent to their, the rest of their property, just on the other side.
That would be over here.
Yeah.
No.
Not well, um.
Off the bottom of your.
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh.
Oh, cause Millennium Drive here.
Right, right, but 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 where your finger is now is the driveway into um, uh, uh, primary colors.
Primary colors, correct.
And primary colors is narrow there and then it opens up to their property, but they're looking to shave a bit off to add to the lot.
Now that I'm thinking about this, what, my memory, you know, I read that and did not have a question when I read it, but my memory was that they're taking a portion of the primary colors property, cause that's owned by someone else, not eight millennium.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's confusing.
Yeah.
Um, and and the somebody else has agreed with the 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 applicant.
My.
Uh, for for um, uh, they've arranged with the applicant.
I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Okay.
I meant to say nine millennium.
Nine, okay, perfect, so that's nine millennium.
Sorry about that.
I feel, I feel much better now.
Yes, yes, so sorry, too many uh, too many millenniums in my sphere.
Too many millenniums.
Like I said, I I read it too, I didn't even catch that.
Okay, so that comment one can go away.
Yes, yep.
Okay, perfect.
But something to bear in mind, then that's going to be a pretty significant project, that's probably gonna involve a good amount of blasting.
Mm-hmm.
Coming, you're just, so you're aware.
Well, we need about twenty-five thousand yards of fill, so hopefully they can catch up.
I think.
We can wheel and deal.
It it sounds like you're gonna be ahead of them.
Well, I hope so.
I don't, you know, unless you can use the fill, you know, in a couple of years, uh.
Okay, and I apologize, I forgot to mention that Angela and Jeff Gassick, who are Eight Millennium LLC and also Epic Poly- Epic Polymers are on uh, Zoom with us this evening, so if you have questions for them, they're happy to participate.
Yes, I will promote them to panelists.
Thank you.
Thank you, I should have started with that. Um, okay, so the rest of page four, we're good on those comments. Bottom of page five, to add the map and lot number to the title sheet, no problem.
Minor, yeah, these are just minor things, I'm being nitpicky.
No, that's great, um, more stuff for my, so I have multiple employees that work on the project and one of them was given these and said, read every requirement and make sure. It's cause we do peer reviews for other towns ourself, and so I try to make this as smooth for myself and also to respect your time, you don't want me coming back here over and over again, so we try to catch as much of this stuff in the beginning as possible.
Yeah, no, you did a good job, really, I mean, there was, it was really minor administrative things for the most part, I mean, if anything, most of the conditions were satisfied when I did my zoning analysis, but most of my comments, the ones to focus on would be under the staff comments as um.
Yep, so adding adding the setback measurements, they're they're in the zoning table, but we can actually add dimensions on the plan, that's not an issue.
Right, cause the the building is gonna be right up against that.
Yeah, so it's one foot more than what's required.
Okay, yep.
Um, and if you look at the elevations that were provided, it's pretty vertical up on that aspect. So um, the next one is screening relative to nine millennium drive. So if you if you scroll one more page, please, to the grading and drainage. You'll see that we've worked pretty hard to start at the property line and grade down to a building platform, because there is ledge, as you just mentioned at five millennium. So we're trying to minimize the cut into that knoll and then fill out through the building and fill out through the side driveway and parking. And then off grade as quickly as we can down to the detention basin with a small section of retaining wall. So we did start at the property line with that grading. Um, again, to to keep everything as as compact in this nature as possible, but as you see from the dark green, we have a large uh, existing wood line to remain, so the dark green and the medium green obviously is the wetlands. All of this will remain unclear and all of that will remain unclear, so really we're just talking about that section there, um, which we're hoping the board will understand our reasoning behind that, and if you want us, there is some trees that will remain on the um, nine millennium side of the property line, but if you wanted us to to bolster that up a little bit with some additional plantings, uh, we'd be happy to. But it's really, it's their driveway looking to us. So be happy to discuss that. Adding a legend is no problem. Whacking my guys over the head for leaving City of Lamonster in the drainage calculation, they got caught in the save as right there. Um, signage, due to the length of the driveway, I'm sure we'll have something at the street that says nine uh, eight millennium. Um, so that the fire department can see it, because they, you know, they might not see all the way into the building, so we'll have something at the street.
Do we have a standard number design out there now, some? Some parks have um, a a a standard design so that all the numbers, for example, are in the same style. I was thinking maybe we did, but it just, I don't.
I believe we do.
Okay, so.
Typically, typically, I've seen a height requirement more than a style, you know.
No, but this is, this is something that the people who have developed Centec Park.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know, um, so that there's some uniformity through the park, um, some some places do that.
Yeah, I'll I'll need to follow, I'll I'll need to follow up, because it's been it's been a little bit since I went out there and looked at that specifically, so, but I do think that there is a style, I think.
If there's an established style, then.
If there is, we we're happy to conform to it, no, not an issue there. Uh, and Fiona, if I skip over any that you wanna focus on, but any of the ones where you said either not applicable or we've satisfied them, I'm bumping over those.
Yep, yep.
Um, the limit of clearing is the kinda clouded line here, which I, the colored plan helps you see that. It's about four acres of clearing of an almost eleven acre site, um, so, little more than a third. And then um, question of whether or not a trafficked impact and access study would be required. We we felt it was, this is a pretty relatively small building, it's thirty thousand square feet, Epic Polymer Solutions is gonna occupy two-thirds of that, so the twenty thousand square feet on this side of the page. They have eight to ten employees that they'll be moving from Northborough to here, so pretty small traffic generator, and then the ten thousand square foot that's remaining. We don't have a tenant, you know, we would begin marketing that space once we get under construction. Um, but again, ten thousand square feet's not gonna generate a huge volume of traffic, so we've requested a waiver and.
I think, I think there's maybe a difference of opinion on whether we should do that or not, um. What's the nature of the business of of?
Epic Polymer Solutions?
I I I read it, I read it and I had no idea. Carbon fiber, uh.
So they do custom coatings um, that are used in a a bunch of different industries, one one being aerospace, so it's it's extruding and coating of wire, and Jeff's on Zoom, Jeff, one of the owners, he's you know, brilliant when it comes to this, he invented all the machines and the the process that he does. They're in Od- uh, one oh four Otis Street right now in Northborough, where they lease a kind of a flex space. Uh, two, actually two flex spaces side by side, and so they're looking to build this facility for themselves.
Cause I think you talked about, what is it, five or ten trucks a day, something like that.
Oh, no, I don't.
Somewhere, there was a number, um, of uh, that was, it sounded.
Four to six trucks per day.
Four to six truck, yeah, five. Five's pretty close then, um, and uh, I I'm trying to get an idea, get get ahead around the business and of course, it depends on whether they're pickup trucks or or they're uh.
So that would, that would, they would have, you know, they would have some tractor trailer, they'd also have FedEx UPS sized deliveries included in that, they don't even have a loading dock at their current space. Uh, they have an acreage door that they load and unload out of.
But I I think our problem is that this will be there. Uh, this building will be there, and we don't know who's going in the other third and what they'll be doing.
Right.
So we don't know how this fits in and it it probably should be considered the same as any thirty thousand square foot building of of this used class, as far as we look at it to you know, there's a lot, there's a lot going on out there, there's the uh, two hundred and some odd living units.
Right.
Going in, uh.
So yeah, so obviously their trip generation would blow ours out of the water, right?
Except their driveway is on uh, Pine Street, isn't it?
No, it's on Millennium.
Oh, it is on Millennium, okay, um, so yeah, they'll be, but it it needs to be looked at, I think, but.
Yeah, I'll, at least for me, I definitely lean toward having the, you know, mass DOT standards for this type of, you know, business and size, you know. You know, it's done out to, just to kinda have it on paper, like the business that goes to leases, you know, outside of that range, then we don't have anything, you know, for, we have a complete, we don't have anything to really, you know, put a pin in it saying, you know, no, you can't have a, you know, ten thousand square foot, like you receiving and reshipping kind of, you know, business there, you know.
Right, but there's one dock, right? So we've permitted other projects where, you know, we permitted a six hundred thousand square foot building in Westminster on spec. They had no tenant, they just, they own the land and they wanted to get it appro- approved, and so the Westminster Planning Board said, okay, I want you to use the uh, I T E land use code for a last mile facility, which is the most traffic you could possibly generate out of any of the models. So we plugged that in and we ran our our traffic count on that. For for this building, where it's thirty thousand square feet, twenty is gonna be occupied by Epic Polly, who's the owner of the building, who has eight to ten employees and call it an average of five trucks a day. Ten thousand square feet with one dock isn't gonna generate any substantive traffic that's gonna change anything on millennium, centennial, or uh, even Route twenty. Even if you ran the math, based on that square footage, it's not gonna make a difference. And so the traffic engineer's gonna say, well, you don't need to do any mitigation, because you're not changing by one tenth of one percent the traffic volume on the surrounding roads.
Any uh, thoughts Fiona?
You know, I mean, I would love to see, you know, something to support it, because we can't really hang our hat on it by word of mouth.
Okay.
So I mean, if uh, follow-up data or something to that nature would be helpful, just.
So a memo, uh, how about a memo from us that outlines the trip generation from the Epic Polly space and then um, potential traffic from the ten thousand square foot space?
If the board is, if that would be. If the board is, if that would be.
I don't, and, you know, I don't wanna get hung up on one point, but I, I don't see the merit in like going out and. Doing a full traffic impact access study that would be traffic counts and intersection analysis. And no build, future build. Doing that whole scenario for six, seven thousand dollars of traffic for ten thousand square feet with one loading dock. If I was proposing a hundred thousand square feet or, or maybe even fifty thousand square feet, I'd say, yeah, you have a good point, but. That size space just simply can't generate enough traffic to have any adverse effect.
What, what's? Is, is it ITE that sets the, uh, trip generation number?
Yes, they have land use codes.
Right, and what is their generation number for your land, uh, for the zoning that you'll be in?
So we would only model it for the, cause we know the trip generation rates for the twenty thousand square feet that's gonna be occupied. So you'd only use that if you didn't know. So what, I would use it for the ten thousand that I don't know the tenant yet.
I wanna know the building.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
Come and go.
They, no, but they own the building, sir.
Yeah, and, um, they may go out of business or decide they need a bigger building, sell it up.
Right.
So other uses can come to it.
So that, that's also the plan for having the ten thousand square feet of lease space is so that if Epic Polly continues to grow from where they are in Northborough. They're moving into the twenty thousand square feet here in Grafton. And then if they continue to grow, then they can take over the ten thousand square foot rental space when that lease expires.
I, I think what Mr. Hassan is trying to, you know, get at, which is kind of my thought as well is. With the use of this building that we're, that we, that we would be granting a permit for, what is the, you know, ITE standards for that use? Because, you know, we know what they're, this, you know, company that's owning it right now is going to plan to do. But if we grant the permit, it's for the use, it's not for the company, you know, necessarily. And so it's a matter of we have the use and if, you know, if the polymer grows. And wanting to take over the ten thousand and maybe their business morphs to needing forty employees at a given time. I don't know that that would happen, but. To kinda have that ITE model would, would at least help me, even if it's in a memo.
I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but that's not typically how the engineering process would work. You would use that if you didn't have a trip generation rate.
Okay, do we have an ITE reference or do we have to ask someone who's in the business of doing this to? Tell us what's in the ITE book?
Probably need to follow up on that.
Well, get that number and, um.
We'll, we'll, we'll do it. I, I'm happy to do it, but I, I just think there's a, there's a disconnect on how the engineering process works.
Start with, what is that number? What, 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 what is the, you know, the, the maximum trip generation? That this, what you want us to permit, uh, would be rated at.
For, uh, just a quick comment, uh, for, for what it's worth, I, I used to work at, um, Olympia Moving and Storage and. In, in the Boston area and they had a multiple, um, docks in their facility. And they were surrounded by a pretty heavy residential area. And even with, with eight docks, the, I mean, it's moving and transportation is probably one of the, the heaviest, um. Volumes of, of truckloads coming out, in and out that you could probably imagine. And, uh, the, uh, from my perspective, having, uh, one dock. I, I, I kinda agree with the fact that even if there were trucks coming in and out, by the time it takes to. For the truck to back in, unload everything that's there, even if they were coming in consistently. In that type of industry, it wouldn't be enough traffic, I think, to really move the needle one way or another. But that's just my own personal, you know, comment, but I think it would be good to. You know, like you said, look at some of the other factors as well.
Thank you.
Help me if I know what.
Sure.
The numbers are.
Yeah. I could put that together. And I, I think the floor plan, if you look at the floor plan, you'll see how small the actual warehouse portion of the, the building is.
We, we have a.
Yep.
We, we have a job.
Understood.
That, that's something for me and I wanna be sure that we're going for whatever the biggest number for. What that's zoned for is, you know, like, we, we have names for uses and. I don't know how our zoning name matches up with the ITE book, but, okay, then we'll, we'll find that out.
Yep.
And that'll help us with what can, what should we do?
Okay. The next one has to do with the spacing between our proposed driveway and nine Millennium's driveway. So.
If you take the center line of their driveway and the center line of our driveway, measured along the curb line. We have fifty-one feet between ours. And if you look at the previously approved plan, their curb radii actually touched. The radii, so we've scooted that over as much as we can to increase that separation. So we have a tangent now where they were.
Yeah.
Radius to radius.
When we did that, we had quite a lot of going around about who wanted what and who didn't want what and whatnot. And, uh, I guess you're saying. We all, previously, we approved something that would, it's closer.
Correct.
Than what you're asking.
Yep, so we, we took it the opposite direction. This is the twenty-five foot no touch that the Conservation Commission enforces. So we took the no touch room for grading, the retaining wall. And so we worked off of the wetland that way to get as much separation as we could between the two driveways. But center line to center line along the curb is fifty-one and I believe fifty's the requirement.
Yes, it is.
Is, is the, called us at one way? Or is it two-way?
I think it's understood to be one way with the island in the middle.
Yeah, because I, I just was wondering, uh, I'm not sure whether there's any sign or anything.
There's no signage or markings, but with the center island, they're typically understood to be one way.
Yeah. I don't know who, if we can do anything about that, I just, I was thinking about it, trying to picture trucks coming out. Tight enough there.
That, that brings me to a thought I was gonna have and, you know, you can finish going through the list if you want before you, you know, come to my question, but. Is how would a truck, you know, be entering and maneuvering on the site? Like I, you know, with the center island, the driveway, at least I can't picture a easy turnaround, especially if there's. You know, one, you know, trailer already just sitting there and, you know, the dock or if they're both, both docks are full and the truck drives in. How would, you know, maneuver, would it be expecting to back down Millennium Drive, would, and, and then down the driveway?
No, no, no.
So they would, they would come in, uh, come out around this driveway, they'd nose up into the corner and then they back into this spot. And then they'd be able to back out.
Would they be, is there enough clearance that if they? You know, I, would you expect them to be a nose into the corner and then back into that, you know, furthest, um.
Yeah, you have the dead space here where the dumpsters are?
Yes.
That would also, you know, if there were two, you could queue.
And not, no, we wouldn't want them to back out onto Millennium.
That was my, you know.
Right.
Thought.
Yeah, and I, I guess that, thank you, I guess that, that kinda helps my argument is this isn't set up for. High traffic truck volume, Mr. Hassick is rolling his eyes at me, but this isn't set up for high truck volume. This is set up for the four to five trucks a day.
How, how does the zoning requirement for number of parking spaces? Fit with, um, the building?
So we have, um, zoning table, industrial and warehouse is one spot for seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have thirty thousand square feet divided by seven fifty is forty required and we're proposing forty-seven. Um, twenty-seven of which at the front and then twenty at the side here. And so these would be, you know, we have a sidewalk to the set of stairs for the rear entrance at Epic Polly. And then handicap spaces, sidewalk for the accessible route to the front of the building. So we split them pretty, pretty equal between the front and rear of the building.
Didn't the fire, fire chief, or, or no, that comment about from. Well, related to fire about could the large engine?
Right, they ever needed to make that turn. Into the parking spaces.
Into or, or get turned around to come back out.
Right, right.
So they have, they have multiple ways they could do that.
If they came to the front, they would be able to pull in here, back out, go. Or if they came to the back of the building, they, they could nose up, back up, they could pull this way, back up. Plenty of room for them to maneuver their fire truck.
Okay, that turn isn't gonna be too sharp.
No. No, we have, um. We have auto turn in our CAD software, so we can, there's, I bet you there's a thousand different vehicles from. Fire trucks and even down to the manufacturer, you know, it's this E one model pumper, we can plug all that stuff in. Articulated buses, tractor trailer trucks, and you can virtually drive the trucks through the site.
Our, our large, our ladder truck, power truck, I guess, is, um. A little more troublesome than some, uh, hangs, hangs way out in the back.
There's a pretty, there's a pretty big, um. Throat here on the plans. This is twenty-four feet, but then when you fill up the radius on either side, you've got a pretty wide throat. There at the, at the front and then obviously, you know, the thirty-seven foot radius is at the back.
Uh, to allow that access. Dust control, we own a, uh, we own a water truck, so if we need it, it's registered. It's a legit, it's not a homemade, it's a legit water truck, front and rear sprayers, hose reel, side sprayer, so if we need dust control, it's. Mobile from site to site. Landscaping.
I think we already just done that.
Well, this is relative to the number of trees. On the landscape plan. So some of the trees are called out in caliber and some are called out in, um, height. But we have two, three, six, ten trees in total proposed, along with. Nine, twelve, fourteen, eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-nine. Forty-one, forty-eight, uh, shrubs proposed.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that all checked out with that.
Yeah, even though they, so like the first, the Freeman maples are called out in caliper, but then the birches are called out in height. And the dogwoods are in caliper and the arborvitae's are in height, so.
Yeah, I was looking at the.
Even though they're, they're, they're trees, some are caliper, some are height.
Okay.
And that's just how they're selected at the nursery. Talked about graves, talked about how we're served by sewer and water. Satisfied. Talked at length about the traffic. I think. I think that covers the majority of the comments.
Yes, I think the only other thing that I did mention was that typically when we do, um, a major industrial complex. We do like to see some data, um, some economic data. Um, that's, it's not, um. It's not something that, from my interpretation of the zoning by law, it's a waiver, but it's also, we don't have like a, uh. We, we have like a format that we've received in the past, but if you did have any market data that you could share. We typically will look at that when we are, um, when we are doing the, um, review process. So it's one of our provisions in our.
In terms of like, you know, number of employees and job growth?
That basic information's already in there, but, um, which was helpful for my analysis and this is, uh, my opinion is. Planning department speaking only is the planner, that I think that we got an accurate understanding of the area that you're serving and.
Okay.
But I, but I would just wanna flag it for the board, is that something that we, we have looked at and we do look at and one twenty-four. Um, must put a road is, is providing that information, so. Just wanna make sure that. This is a significantly smaller proposal than that one, so.
Yep.
Obviously.
And although the applicant is listed as Eight Millennium Drive LLC, it's, it's an owner occupied building. Um, it's not being built for just leased by a land, you know, landlord that owns multiple properties. This is for them. Jeff and Angela, the owners are there every day and so obviously, um, whatever tenant they pick. For their remaining space would, would have to mesh well with their existing business, you know. They're not gonna wanna a junk guy or, you know, somebody that's recycling and trying to store outside. They're gonna want it to be a neat. Cause they're, they're, you go in their existing space now, everything's neat and, you know, very professional, high-end manufacturing, so they're gonna want somebody. That's, um. That fits with them in this location.
It's not, that wouldn't be ideal.
Yeah, that would be ideal. Um, and, you know, and they're leasing now in Northborough and they're looking to own and, and be here in Grafton. So it's, you know, benefit of that job creation in town and a major investment, right? This is no small project. To undertake.
And we, and we have been looking for many, many years to get lots in this area developed.
Yes. And, and so we're, we're ready and so, um. Honestly, my hope was where the comments are, are minor in housekeeping and nature. We were really hoping that we could close the, the hearing this evening and start moving towards a decision because there is a. Permitting clause in the purchase and sales agreement that we're going to be bumping up against. Um, and we're also, even though it's still August, everybody in the construction industry is starting to think snow and winter conditions and. Paying extra for concrete and heat and all that good stuff that goes along with it, so we would be extremely appreciative if the board. Um, could head in that direction.
So, so in terms of the prospects for moving forward. If we were to close the hearing tonight, we would be working on a draft decision two weeks from now.
Correct.
As we often do. Uh, we probably have enough information to begin working on a draft decision. But because there are some updates to be made to the plans, um, there were some questions, you know, some additional information that we're looking for. We could keep the hearing open for two weeks without any loss of scheduling because. If in two weeks we receive all the, all the necessary, we, you know, ideally. When we issue a decision, it's based upon up-to-date plans and not pending anything more. But unless something else comes up to further delay it, I'm gonna suggest that we can. Staff can begin drafting a decision. We'll keep the hearing open because we do have some, you know.
Yeah.
Additional information to come in. Next week, two weeks from now, if all goes well, the hearing can be closed and a decision issued. Unless there is something more that has to delay it.
Right. Our decision has to be based on what's on the record when we close the hearing. So the modified plans aren't on the record. The information I'm asking and the potential for a traffic study would be foreclosed.
Understood.
But, um. This is, this is.
You can't blame, you can't blame for asking.
This is the strategy we try to do. We gotta keep her busy, usually.
Yeah.
Right, so the point is. Keep the hearing open so we can get complete information.
Sure.
And we will be in, hopefully in a position, like I said, unless something unexpected pops up. We should be in a position to close in two weeks and complete the, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the, the edits that we went through tonight, I mean, might be two hours of CAD and then print and stamp a set of plans.
Not a lot of work.
And then put the memo together on traffic, if I, if I could, since I'm gonna be making the edits. The one question, do, does the board feel that we need some additional buffering between our site and the nine Millennium driveway? Is Fiona brought up or?
At least for myself, I'll say I like the idea of some additional buffering. I don't like the, the concept of potentially having to move the building to accommodate it. So, you know, I'm not sure what makes sense there.
Yeah, I'll talk to Larry, the landscape architect in my office, and what can we put on the slope that's gonna actually survive? That's gonna give some height and we'll, we'll add that to the revised plans.
That's not a bad idea. I mean, when, if they, if, it's. The, it's the, the primary color is a driveway and it's not, it's, it's, that's, that's what comes close to the property line, so.
Yep.
I think the, your, your, your expectation of buffering or your, your, your desire for buffering is different in this case than it would. It probably is more relaxed in this case than it would be if there was a, a, a building. You know, the building was adjacent to the property line.
Sure.
So, yeah, something, what, what, whatever can, whatever it can be made to work, I think.
Okay.
We wouldn't, I would not object.
Thank you.
Yeah. We haven't heard from the, uh, primary colors people as to whether they might have any input. I know that they had input relative to the project on the other side.
Yeah, so they, they did receive notification for this hearing and for conservation coming up, so. And, and for what it's worth, I'm sure that Jeff and Angela will be good neighbors to them.
I think that they weren't real enthusiastic about the previous uh.
Understandably, yeah.
Approval there.
So Mr. Hassen, you're one thing I did notice while we were talking, I re-looked up the, you know, zoning bylaws for the, you know, major industrial complex. And there is something in decision criteria that is a little different than we, you know, than I've been on the board for typically, you know, dealing with regarding traffic. If, you know, you will allow me to, I'll read it. The complex shall be so designated and, and located that annual average daily traffic is not increased fifty percent. Or more above current levels at any point more than one thousand feet from a state highway intersection. With current levels being as determined by the Grafton Planning Board at developer's expense. And shall be so located that resultant traffic is not above the capacity of roads and intersections for level of service C. At any point within one mile of the premises, using definitions and methods of estimation as outlined by the Highway Research Board Highway Capacity Manual. Nineteen sixty-five or later.
So what does that say? Does that say we need some more?
Yeah, I.
Looking into it?
I think that the main thought in my mind is, you know, we should see what, you know, the applicant's, you know. Team comes up with in, in a memo for why they may think that a waiver is appropriate with that decision criteria for us, but.
I don't know, cause we, without knowing the numbers that it just said percentages of.
Yeah.
You know, what do you do?
That's, that's what I'm not sure about at the moment.
That's, well, maybe between now and next time.
Mm-hmm.
At least get, cause you're not gonna do a traffic study by next time anyway, so.
No.
Maybe by next time.
You, you're talking three weeks just to get counts.
Heads around.
Yeah.
Let's, let's try to have our heads around.
My, you know, my intuition is that there is a, the tripec is a non-issue here, but I would like, I would like a decision to be based on, on more than my intuition.
Yep.
Yeah, cause twenty years from now, one of us is gonna get called into a court for uh, and a uh. For an appeal, like it's happening right at the moment, twenty years later.
Sure. I think once, I think.
What did you do? Oh, you didn't do it twenty years, it's, oh, whoa, and, and everybody gets it.
That paragraph I just read is cited as being passed at town meeting in nineteen eighty-six.
Well.
Well, it's part of that zoning adoption, right?
Yeah, that was.
That was part of those office and light industrial zoning adoption at the time.
Right, that's when the whole, the whole current zoning.
Yep.
You know, was total.
Basically rewrote the zoning law.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think, I'm certain that you'll all feel more comfortable when we put a memo together that shows how little traffic we'll be generating.
Yep.
Okay, um, there is, there isn't anybody out there trying to comment?
Jeff, Jeff and Angela, you wanna say anything?
They were on, if they dropped. Nope, they are on.
Can't tell whether.
Are they still there?
Jeff is on, I just promoted him. I didn't, we promoted him.
Yeah, he must have disconnected and got back, cause he reverted to being an attendee. There we go.
We can hear you, your microphone's a little soft, though.
Oh. No, we don't have a comment, sorry, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so uh, you want to request?
Continuance.
Continuation until.
The next meeting.
Our next meeting.
Next meeting is September eleventh, I believe.
Yep.
Perfect.
Someone wanna make a?
So I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request to be received momentarily. To continue this hearing to Monday, September eleventh at seven thirty PM.
Perfect.
Move in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Vecchittroman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassen.
I vote aye, motion carries unanimously.
And I'm sure staff has taken the direction of the board to begin working on drafting a decision for this. So that we can hopefully be ready to approve the decision at the next meeting. Upon closing that public hearing.
Gonna start being busy out there. Which I guess is good. All right. Uh, we can move on to uh Five Mill Street Park.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Jane is on. Share, this is our summary report. The final deliverable is part of our DLTA application for uh Mill Street Park or Whitney Park. One moment here. Okay, so this, the report basically summarizes um the discussions that we've had to date. Implementation is going to involve probably, uh, well, will involve additional feedback. Um, I found that, you know, we, this was a good jumping off point in terms of. Understanding what folks want to see, but we'll definitely need to either do another DLTA application or something similar. To maybe host an additional workshop or have um ongoing conversations with obviously this board as well as the select board. Um, to confirm what folks would like to see, um, so this really was um just a final presentation for the board members. Um, it includes obviously the background of the project, um, the engagement that we've done to date as well as the concepts. The existing conditions and um how we arrived at what we did in terms of um having a path to chart. Charter forward when we try and implement, um, which, as I mentioned, will probably be um. Will warrant additional conversation, will probably be closer to next year, but I wanted to give Jane the opportunity to respond to any questions. The board might have um and kind of finalize this, this project, we're at, we're at the tail end here and this is the. This is the last major deliverable um with our contract to CMR PC and. I think that it, you know, thank you very much Jane and Lindsay um for all of your work. An ongoing dedication to this project, where you know that we received a lot of really uh great feedback and we can't wait to um, let's plan into action.
Very good. Uh, since the last time that we met, um, I did add into the budget or cost estimate. The cost for preparing construction documents, um, and the figure I used was fifteen percent of the cost of the actual implementation. Uh, so for phase one, it was around seven thousand dollars for construction documents. Uh, for the remainder of the phases, it was closer to uh fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, if this board had mentioned the possibility that if um. Funding could be obtained and we wanted to do the park all in one, um, one large phase, uh, rather than phasing it, then um. The first estimate for phase one construction documents would not apply, it would just be the fifty-three thousand for all phases.
Jane, am I on the right page? I'm looking at phases, but I wanna make sure I'm pulling up the.
If you go back up one page, it's phase one.
Okay.
Um, if you were to do just the phase one, uh, we're looking at about seventy-seven hundred dollars for construction documents. And a total of, for phase one of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars. So if, if you were to just go forward with the whole project, rather than phasing it. Uh, you would not have that seventy-seven hundred dollar fee, you would look down at the bottom on the next page to the uh fifty-two thousand dollar fee. Or fifty-three thousand, and that would cover all five phases, cause we're looking at the uh percentage of the total cost of implementation.
So I think this covered pretty much everything that we had discussed prior and, you know, I think it came out really nice.
Thank you.
I think my.
Yeah. And so some of the recommendations were uh internal things, I know that Fiona has already started talking to police and fire about. Uh, traffic uh flow through the area as well as the siren at the fire station. Um, so those are just internal discussions that can be had to try to uh alleviate some of those issues for the people who live in the neighborhood.
So Jane, can I just ask, so this um chart here, this was the final phase cost estimate, not looking at two different avenues. Per se, like as we've mentioned before.
So, this page is phase, phase one, and then it is broken down by each phase on the following page.
Right, but the.
Or. Go ahead.
So, so I just wanna, because I know that you present, you did concepts A and B, one uh um. More affordable option versus the other, and I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding the way that the chart is broken down and how to read that in relation to the concept plans.
So if uh the town decided just to do phase one for now, we'd be looking at um. The phase one plan that is uh further down in the report, um, and at this fifty-nine thousand dollar fee.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly, thank, thank you.
And, and some of the nonprofits that I spoke with and um actually a, a park supplier. Uh, they seemed pretty confident that they have contacts for obtaining funding for different aspects. Of developing the park, especially if you're gonna build it accessible. Um, that, that scores really high on grant applications.
Yeah, I guess my only additional comment is more for Fiona, but I think it'd be nice to share this document directly with the select board. And with the new recreation director.
Yeah, absolutely.
How about the town?
Was that pub?
Hmm, how about the town?
The town in general too, yes, definitely on the website and such, but.
Yes, that's, that is up there.
Can people find it, you know, does anything tell them they might wanna go look?
Yes, I have done some promotion, but.
No, oh, oh, yes is enough, um.
Awesome.
Is there at least one or two people who are interested?
Yes.
Yeah.
For sure, and there could very well be, you know, if the recreation director wants to, you know, pursue this, which. Well, given the work we put into it, probably a good idea, but, you know, as Jane mentioned, there's, you know, much of great opportunities, there's, you know, the CPA in Grafton. That could be approached.
My, one point that I will follow up with um is to that comment is, yes, implementation will, will be um. Will take a while, just between grant applications, can, getting additional feedback, probably some future engagement. Um, this really is the first step in this process to catalyze the, the next, the next step here, so. Yes, I, I foresee myself applying for a lot of grants.
It um. It qualifies under the.
I would.
CPA, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it, outdoor recreation qualifies for CP, for CPC CPA funding.
Okay, oh, okay, good. Super park. Okay, and, and it just seems to be an endless flow of money, I mean, everybody goes there and gets money, don't they?
If their project qualifies and they, and they know to approach it, that's an avenue that anybody in the town, town department other, otherwise could.
But I'm saying that there's enough, there's always enough money, right?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know where it's all coming from.
Money never runs out.
Oh. I'd be careful about being, having that recorded.
So, will, will all the decisions around this park uh going forward fall into the purview of the rec department?
Uh, which?
Uh, which, in terms of like the decisions that get made for the future of this project, where will those fall under?
So ultimately, the report would drive any future decision-making and um, you know, we would, I, I think that'd get involving the rec department. It's gonna be critical um going forward, um, they were involved when this was being drafted as well, but. Um, in terms of final decision-making, that can probably be a um collaborative effort between the planning board, rec committee, select board. Et cetera, um, I think a lot, that's, that's why the implementation of this is so critical, there's gonna be a lot of. Decision-makers that are gonna need to sit at the table, cause it's, it is, it's not a small feat. But at least we have the study that we can reference and say we have um budget here, and we have budget, budget items that we can. Look to that we have, okay, a phase, one phase where that's a little bit more inexpensive compared to other options that we have, so. Um.
So in terms of the next steps, it'll be scheduling something with a different stakeholders to.
Yeah, I think that what I'll, what I'll do is I'll follow up on uh Mr. Hassen's suggestion of sharing directly the report with. With the select board as well as the new record, we just hired a new recreation director, I'll share it with the rec committee. Um, offer to attend uh the next recreation committee meeting slash select board meeting, whomever wants to. Uh, talk through the report with me, I'm happy to do, you know, there was again, a lot of work put in, so. I think my strategy would probably be applying for another round of DLTA funding to host um. To get some assistance with uh some additional outreach for, uh, now that we're ready to, to implement, and now we have a study to guide us. And grants.
There's. What? DLTA something, there, there's a, a, a new category of money that's for them to help. With applying for stuff.
DLTAA. Yeah.
And that might be a source.
Yeah.
The first year, hardly anybody went for it, I think I just heard recently that there were, people were beginning to catch on.
Mm-hmm.
I think staff up there is beginning to catch on to. Here's a way to.
Yeah.
You know, find work.
Yeah, I followed up a few months ago about the DLTAA funding and Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm not sure if you, if you're aware. But um I had spoken to another person there at CMR PC and she said that. Something with the funding being limited or there was a reason that I'm now um.
There is criteria for what it can be used for, I would have to look into the details of that maybe and send it to you.
Okay.
We, we've used it to um help other communities apply for grants for other federal funding.
Right, uh, there was just, I, I just, at the last executive committee meeting, I think it was, I heard this. Unbelievable list of uh. Some thing, you know, in these categories and in others, how many projects, how many things have been uh come by? And, and worked on uh through fundings like this one uh recently, so. Anyway, it's worth asking.
Sure, and I just, Jane, I have one more question for you, um. Do you know off the top of your head if some of this, the traffic calming and pedestrian considerations, especially some of the signage that we were looking at and we discussed. Would be a com- eligible through complete streets, cause I know that that application process is opening October one.
I can check with Ian on that.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I should, I, 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 we just finished our tier two prioritization plan, which does have an extensive list of projects. So I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but something to consider.
Sure.
Gonna complete all our streets, is that it?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the board?
So, how are we doing?
Any other questions or?
No, okay, are we done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Jane.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Jane, appreciate all your help, help over the past few months getting this done, this is, this is great, and we, now we have a, a blueprint that we can, we can hang our hat on.
Very good, very good, and I will check with Ian on the complete streets funding.
That'd be great, thanks so much. And, and the DLTAA funding as well if.
The, okay, very good, all right, have a good evening.
All righty, bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, um, moving right along, bills, did we have any bills? I don't remember seeing any bills.
No, no bills.
Uh, minutes of previous meetings, I don't think I remember any.
No.
Uh, staff report.
Yes, sorry, bear with me for one second while I pull that out. So I just wanted to remind the board, um, this is uh. Uh, we are, um, Italians are going to be completely remote for a couple more weeks, um, so just if you need anything from us, just try and. Uh, we are, um, Natalia's is going to be completely remote for a couple more weeks, um, so just if you need anything from us, just try and. Shoot us an email or call us to, um, set something up for a conversation, I am away this Thursday and Friday. And just a friendly reminder that I am not going to be here for the October second planning board meeting, um, so. Just, just have that on the back of your mind, um, something that I. Before I dial, dive into the projects, planning projects specifically, um, I am thinking about capital needs. For the planning department, one thing that has been brought to my attention and I would like the board to weigh in if they are interested is. A screen that's specifically for sharing during our meetings, it's a, it stands on its own. Um, the Z B A is using one and it seems to be a lot easier to run meetings. When you ha- when the person running it has a dual screen instead of trying to work off of the one. Um, they're relatively inexpensive from what I understand, I think. Two hundred dollars or less, but just something that I think would be useful for us.
That, that's a monitor that you plug into your.
Yes.
Laptop.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um. I always run Zoom in, well, when I'm on that computer, um. In, in that mode, except it didn't work last, uh, a day or two ago for some reason, again. Chrome has just done something, um, or maybe many things, uh, okay, so, uh, sure, uh, tell.
Sure, yeah.
Te- te- tell Evan, uh, that, uh, we think he ought to find a couple hundred dollars.
Perfect, yes, awesome, so, and, um, also thinking about kind of the capital budget about what, you know. Always thinking in the back of my mind what reports need to be updated, I believe we're. We're meeting all of our windows, um, but if there is a, something that the board would like me to include, you know. The open space plan, for example, or the housing production plan, which is a five-year window. The master plan is a little bit longer of a window, but there are, we do, we are required to keep these documents updated, um. So, open to, to suggestions on what to include, um, I think I will put in for the housing production plan. Um, because it's much smaller window and, and I think the select board would like to see. Planning for longer than, you know, one and two-year structures, they wanna further. Um.
Not, not really on that, but you make me think, I, I was just thinking in the last day or a couple few days. It'd be interesting to have a current count of how many. Residential units we have, um. Approved, uh, for, uh, development, you know, like it's probably. I probably have to break it down a little bit by fully approved and, you know, there's some, something going on with it. But, there'll be an argument, you know, when people argue that we're not doing anything about housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it'd be interesting to be able to quote.
Okay, yeah.
In, in various contexts.
The last time I looked at the numbers was about fourteen hundred, but I can get an exact number in the pipeline in various stages of approvals.
It'd be interesting, you know, you might get how many unit, yeah, if you can get any breakdown on it, like affordable or, you know, any.
Mm-hmm, sure, absolutely.
Oh, and rental versus.
Home ownership.
Ownership.
Sure. Um, so in addition to, to that, um, I interviewed, uh, for, I, um. Interviewed a w- woman for the regional housing coordinator position, which will be a central mass, uh, position that's shared, regionalized. I invited her to come to the Affordable Housing Trust meeting on the fourteenth, so that will be nice and be able to have a little bit more assistance. Um, she's, she's wonderful, she has a lot of experience working in a variety of backgrounds concerning housing. I think her most recent position was at the Cambridge Housing Authority, so looking forward to meeting her. And updating the board on that discussion and having her kind of dive in on, uh. Mainly providing technical assistance to the trust and helping implement our housing production plan and help with our update that we're currently doing. Um.
Who, who's that under?
The, uh, C M R P C hired the position, but it's a, um. It, it's a collaboration between the town of Grafton and six other communities, so. We, we said we would enter into the pilot program for the first year to see how the role goes and we can choose to continue to opt in.
Do that on our list, but what are we doing?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see, you know, that's, yeah, we're, we're, um, we're going to see how it goes and hopefully, you know, goes well. Then we can, we can continue on with that, um. Uh, so it, so yeah, in addition, it's really been, um, it's really been, uh, prepping for planning board meetings and doing follow-up these days. Um, in addition to just basic, um. Running the, running the office in the department, but in addition to that, we are, we have finalized our venue for the master plan workshop for the fall. Grafton High School Commons, um, working on permitting for food, working on, um, advertising with C M R P C. Working on getting our town meeting booth set up. And I will keep the board updated, um, a lot of moving parts, working with our, um, master plan working group and our chair, Dave, to help, um. To do, to handle the coordination, our next meeting is the eighteenth. So we'll continue, we'll talk more in depth about how we're going to, um, organize the workshop then and there. And lastly, I will say that we had our open space parcel acquisition project kickoff meeting with C M R P C. That went quite well, um, basically established criteria for that we wanna look toward as we go forward as well as. Talked at a higher level about, um, places that we, you know, we're interested in and the data layers that we'd be looking at. To help prioritize these parcels, um, Dave, if I miss anything, I'm missing anything there, let me know, but I owe C M R P C some data. Um, I did follow up on that regional build out analysis with Matt, which is a project that we began, I believe, under Chris. I followed up when I started here. And it, I never, I never heard back, so I circled back again and I think it's just, we'll, we'll be able to finalize that. I need to review some of that data and we should be able to get that, that done in unison with the, um, open space parcel project. So that's, that's a priority of mine to get, bring back around and, yeah, other than that, our M B T A communities are, um. Fall town meeting zoning updates, our reviews, if I'm missing something, then I apologize. But we have a lot going on right now, so, um, happy to answer any questions or talk further about anything specifically. Okay.
No.
Great.
Correspondence, it, there was a, a thing added, but I think it's something we really dealt with.
Yes.
That was the.
We spoke.
Feedback on.
Yep.
Or not.
Did I, did I miss on the staff report, just the fact they did a site visit for. One of our ongoing.
Hmm.
Oh, yes, 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 we did have our, um, one twenty-four West Borough Road site visit where we checked out the building stakes. Um, it was Jim, Dave, Justin, myself and their team, um. And then we also, we, we went into the woods and then we exited back, um. Along Institute, went across the street to see where the entrance, the post, um, entrance will be, um.
Probably. We should be in, i- if we're in the hearing for that. A report on what people saw then would be better because it would be added to the record.
Yep. Yeah, just felt it's worth mentioning that we did it. Just felt it worth mentioning that we did it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it was, um, it was an interesting visit, you know, you see how, oh, Hillyett is there.
Yeah, I, I wasn't able to, uh.
Missed the beautiful day of weather.
Very rainy.
That's like outdoors, with bugs and rain and sun and stuff, okay, um. Uh, do we have anything from planning board representatives on town committees? I've already told about C M R P C a little bit, I.
As the board's representative on the open space and recreation committee. Fiona said everything that needed to be said about the most recent O S R committee meeting. Pushing forward on that, right?
Yeah.
And CPC, we have, we submitted to the psych board a warrant article for. The library's cupola. Because that has some structural issues that need to be improved upon, so that doesn't leak into the historic reading room. They ask us about seventy four thousand dollars and. But they'll be talking about that at town meeting.
Yeah, sometime soon, someone may wanna talk about how drainings works outside the, uh, ground floor entrances. Um, I went out there and I looked at it, just casually, you know, just walked, walked up and down past where the water went in. And I don't understand how that's supposed to work, so to not go in, the, the floor and the. Transom for the doors and the walk outside are all completely level. There's, at the door, there's not even a, an inch high, transom, probably for, uh, accessibility maybe. But, um, it's flat and water. I don't think this is the last time that that's gonna happen, um, and I'd, I'd love to know what the engineers. Thought they were doing, although I, I think that was a difficult, um, design issue wetland right there and all that stuff. But I'd like to know how that's supposed to work so that water doesn't get in. I, I was just listening to a report earlier this evening about what they're having to go through to repair that. I don't know why we didn't catch that when we were permitting, actually, we, I don't think the special permit really gave us a whole lot of look at, uh.
It's before me.
Okay.
It was before me too. It was before me too.
Oh, well, um, yeah.
Anyway.
I went through, I, I went through at least three different tries for the library. Um, yes, um. Okay, is there anything else which may legally come before us?
I think a motion to adjourn would be in order.
It, it is, and if you wanna make it.
I'll go so far as to make that motion.
Second.
Jim seconded it.
Who did?
Jim.
Second.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
You gotta, you know, my, my. Um, that's not debatable, roll call.
Mister Robbins.
Aye.
Mister Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Veika Trauman.
Aye.
And Mister Hassenir.
Aye. We're done.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Good night.